Welcome, everyone. It's Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, 6 o'clock. We first have to start with the meeting of the Board of the Liquor Commission. We have five applicants. Elks Club, Sackton River Inn, Laszlo's Pizza, Wellfleet, Inc., and Rockingham Trading Company, Cambridge Country Store.
Chairman, do you want to do these all separate? Or do you want to do them all in one bunch like we did last time?
We can do the whole bunch, I think.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the Elks Club Bell's Falls First Class and Outside Consumption Permit, Sackton River Inn First Class and Outside Consumption Permit, Laszlo's Pizza Palace First Class Permit, Wellfleet, Inc., Second Class Liquor License, and Rockingham Trading Company doing business as a Cambridge Country Store, should be Cambridge Port, Second Class License.
Sir, second?
My second.
I just had a question about, well, a couple of them, actually. The Cambridge Country Store, I had heard was closed.
You too.
What's the story with that?
Somebody new had bought it last night, I thought.
I don't know.
They did new owners on it, but I just judge it from the application.
Yep.
This automatic or whatever the address was there.
Okay.
Yeah. And Wellfleet is the store out of Sackton River.
Right. And then the Elks Club, is that, did they, are they moving?
I believe so, yeah.
They got, that got permit, approved last week? Was it last week?
It's being approved.
Being approved.
Yes.
All right. Anything else?
Do we have the originals coming around somewhere? I think our scribes missing tonight.
That's a good question.
I'm sure she said something.
She did not leave them out. I'll skip out at some point and see if they're upstairs. She's out.
Do you want to use one of ours and we'll just do them? Use that as the original?
Well, these aren't, like, they aren't, is it worth them?
That might be a good alternative.
Yeah.
Where's comes to where's, we can gather signatures another way.
Okay.
That would be good. One of these, use yours. Right here.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, public hearing. Rockingham zoning bylaws amendment, the second required public hearing. I guess up to you, right?
I'm here to answer questions if there's anything to cover. But the only thing that, I don't know if it was mentioned at the last, because we're required to have two hearings. Peter found an error on page 109 that has been since corrected. So it was just a small technical reference to a subsection that didn't exist. Once we clear this hearing, it'll just be an adjutant item at your next meeting. You'll vote to approve. Just that finalizes the bylaws.
Is there any further questions or comments about?
Thank you.
All right. Public hearing?
The copies have been made public, they're on the website.
All public notification. These were done.
Okay. So I guess we can close the hearings and wait for the vote next week.
Perfect.
Okay. Now, we'll call the meeting of the Rockingham Select Board to order 601, no, 604. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
I think so. Under maybe item 4C, we have a discussion on USDA grant for town hall elevator.
Okay.
Do you have anybody taking minutes today?
Yeah.
Terry's doing it from home.
Oh, I just was wondering.
I'm supposed to be recording.
Yep. No problem. She's doing it through the TV as well. Sorry, Terry.
I need to sign these three here.
All right.
Two signatures on each page.
So the first thing, then, is access permit. Chuck. Oh, wait, no. I'm skipping way ahead. Oh, my goodness. Approved minutes, April 3rd, 2018.
Make the motion to approve the minutes of April 3rd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Yes.
Yeah. Gary Fox, Development Director. And there's a collaboration of the Bell's Falls Downtown Development Alliance, the Greater Falls Chamber of Commerce, Rockingham Arts and Museum Project. And it's for a showcase, a business open house for the downtown. And this is a draft of the Save the Date card. There'll be an invite going out, so just to give the Select Board a heads up, folks will be getting these. And basically inviting folks from around the state and neighboring states to come and see available retail storefronts, office spaces on second floors of the downtown buildings, and then industrial facilities that have space available within the downtown. So there'll be the two tours, and it's from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. on May 18th.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Managers report.
I mentioned before that I'd like to add to the agenda a USDA grant for town hall elevator. I just want to report that we've been working on that, and we've been offered a $50,000 grant, and we can talk about that a little bit later. But we had estimates early on of a project costing roughly $98,000, and we're going to have to pay for that with our own funds. You recall there was a bond passed in 2016 to do all that work, you know, town hall work as well as the rec center, and this gives us that much more money that we can work on existing facilities. So that's a good plan. Also been notified from the Southern Windsor Regional Planning Commission that we are eligible for 0% grant funding for remediation and removal of 10 church plays. So I think the number is roughly 108,000 that we're going to be eligible for, so that's good news also. Now we can start putting together a request for proposals for our invitation to bid to get that, make that happen. And I've been working with Chuck on that project. So that's very good news. Those are really the, you know, the two items I was going to discuss at this point. No, actually, no, one last thing. Tomorrow I may be testifying over the phone with the House Transportation Committee once again, dealing with the issue of overweight limits in villages. And they are looking to remove that limitation on villages whereby the state highway load limits apply to villages. They're looking to get rid of that. One of the issues, however, is signage. They're going to require a sign on every road off every town, town one class highway that indicates what the load limit is. And I'm arguing against that. It's mostly going to be an expense on the part of the state. It's going to be huge. Thousands and thousands of signs, not just villages, but towns as well. This is a new requirement. It's going to cost a bundle of money. And we may be on the hook for posts, but they will be supplying signs not only up front but ongoing. My sense is there should be a sign at every entrance to the town that says load limit 24,000 pounds unless otherwise indicated. And that's my take on it. But, so that'll be tomorrow, 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Any questions? Anything else? All right. Now we can go on to the agenda. Access permit. Chuck. 120 Paradise Hill, James and Jane Macri.
You should have materials on this. Mike and I reviewed it with the contractor. That got, there's not much to discuss. We highly recommend the site visit if you ever want to get up that way. It's beautiful. But it's going to be an improvement to the end of the Class III road.
No issues? Not at all? All right.
Where's that ditch? They show, it looks like a culvert going in, and it's a ditch along, I guess, part of their property. Where's that ditch drain at?
So what you're going to see is a removal of steel cupboard at the location of the old driveway. Ditching that basically picks up where that water was using this old steel cupboard, goes down to the new driveway. And right before the new driveway, there'll be a new 18-inch culvert that crosses the road at that location, spits out on the adjacent field.
So it doesn't exit out, the water doesn't get out of Paradise Hill?
No. It's a superior drainage, close to the brook. Yeah.
Okay. What's the feeling of the board? Motion to approve?
Chairman, I move that we approve the access permit for 120 Paradise Hill, James and Jane Macri.
All seconded. Any further discussions and questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Recycling Center, Gary. Vehicle placards and stickers. So, here we are.
Gary put together a nice synopsis of the program, and I handed that out to the board, so he's here to talk further about that.
I brought you paper, so I'll take it with me. It's recycling, if you'd like. I hate to waste paper, but.
I don't know what you ended up getting from, if they've got that or not, but there's a few other things with it. If it's redundant, I apologize, but I just wanted to make sure we are all talking on the same.
So basically, I understand you folks talked at the last meeting that you had some questions about where we're at with the program. Shane and I have discussed a couple of things. I had some issues, but we're ready to roll with it.
We just need a policy established, basically. And there's some policy questions in that email that I just handed you a rehash of. What I've also included in the packet is just for your information, it's just reference, there's a copy, the first two pages are of our certification that says who we service on page two, you'll notice I highlighted on that particular document. It's an eight-page document. Doreen's probably familiar with it. But it is on file at the Town Clerk's Office, anybody wants to read more of it. But that's the one line that talks about who we service down at the facility. I put a copy of the current stickers that we have in your packet, so you all could see that we've got them. We're ready to roll as soon as we get the policy established. There's another document in there which just is an example, and I apologize, it doesn't say example, but there's a Town of Cavendish form that they use, I guess in Cavendish, to record the information on their transfer station permits. It's an example just showing what type of information we will need to collect. And finally, a, some sort of a notice once we get a policy established. I mean, it's, it's, it's only a draft, it's just giving you an idea of what I intend or what I would suggest that we hand out once we get the policy established and know who's going to get the stickers and how they're going to get them, where they're going to get them, et cetera, et cetera. So with that, be glad to answer questions.
I got a quick one. Sometimes we use my car, and sometimes we use Jim's truck. So am I going to be able to get a permit for each?
My feeling on it is that you're a resident and Jim's a resident, and you both are entitled to a sticker.
Okay.
That's the way I read it, and that's the way I would recommend it, but.
Hey, we're thinking, well, there's probably all of the policy, but thinking about limiting the number of access permits. I mean, you know, you've got a guy that's got three or four vehicles over there. It tends to hand it out, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
It's, I know it's going to be a little hard to get to started, but.
Yeah.
First thing's going to be establish a policy, and I feel we'll have to find some time to put into writing one up.
Sign them up.
This part here, this is previously discussed charging $25 per year.
Yep.
For non-residents?
Yep.
Right now it's free to all residents of Rockingham and Westminster.
Well, that's what we've been discussing. My recommendation would be free to Rockingham residents.
Sure. And we think most Westminster residents didn't even use it because they had free curbside, zero sort.
That was the theory. That was the theory.
But do they come with construction debris and other, you know, other kind of stuff?
That stuff's charged.
On occasion, we do get compensated for that, but not for the actual use or whatever of the facility, with the exception of the amount that they rebate on the property tax annually, you know, the town, not individuals. So that's what, that's what's always been, it's been one of those things, you know. How many Westminster folks use our facility? And I don't know. We've never really done a full-blown, you know, have somebody sitting there doing account to know how many are Westminster, how many are Rockingham, how many are Grafton, how many are Athens. We get folks from all the towns, and I do know when Westminster was talking about doing things different back when Wyndham Solid Waste closed, we had a lot of input from folks on Kissel Hill, which is actually in Westminster. So I know we're seeing some of them, not necessarily for recycling, but for, you know, for using the facility for the pay-as-you-go stuff.
Here you go, sir.
Oh, is the, is the question kind of, would, would you need a sticker to drive in to pay to get rid of metal or tires or lawn?
Yes. The only thing you wouldn't have to have a sticker for because we can't charge for it is getting rid of electronics, computers and TVs, because it's a state program, and we've said that there would be no charge by participating in it. We actually get money back, you know, by waiting on that kind of stuff, so we've signed an agreement with the state by participating in their, that plan, that program, that we don't charge anybody. So I know other places aren't charging for people bringing that in, and those could come in from anybody. You know, somebody in Burlington, they're driving by, could stop in and drop them off. So it'd be a little hard to do differently.
Question for Shane. I have, the agreement between Westminster and Rockingham as far as the taxes go, it's like a $1,600 switch. We pay them, they turn around, send the check back. I mean, is it worth trying to redo that or trying to review that? And just, I talked to the Select Board Chair in Westminster, and as far as they're concerned, they're not too concerned about that agreement.
Yeah. It goes back to Paul McGinley and Bill O'Connor, when this was years back, just had an exchange. It was never really appeared, it was never a board decision, from what I can see. It's sort of a handshake situation. And it might make sense to do that, and, you know, they could be pulled out of the permit, and if they want to use it, they can pay 25 bucks a head. But, you know, that's where we are right now. We have an agreement. We wanted to kind of just roll it out, see how it went for a year, and it would just, we want to do one thing at a time and not do both necessarily at the same time. Just get the permit process rolling and think about that for next year.
His response.
It's a budget matter also.
His response was that if we need to charge them, charge them. So the residents, I mean, they're supposed to have roadside pickup, but what they do is down there on their roadside pickup, that no matter how many apartments, if you have an apartment house, they only get 52 or 54 bags a year. You can buy more, but they're allotted so many bags to dispose of. And anything beyond that, they have to either buy or they have to pay to get rid of it.
We would just need to make up the $1,600 in permit fees.
Good time.
Well, you pay for bags. I think the concern these days is the amount that's going in the zero sort compactors.
That's been an issue that's been raised.
If they come from Westminster with bags of trash, they pay for it, no matter where you live.
Yep.
With the zero sort thing, the guys running it and people is just very busy. And that's what we want to try to limit, who's putting stuff in there.
It's been busy. Tonnage-wise, I can't tell you that it's overwhelming compared to what our regular numbers have been, from what I saw on the reviews. I don't know if people are not recycling as much, the tonnage isn't showing, reflecting it, but I did go back and look at tonnage numbers, you know, the last few quarters, I guess it was. We started in September. I haven't seen a large increase in the tonnage on the recycling. It's been pretty stable about what we had been doing. It's actually pretty close to being right on the bunny, what we projected. But, that having been said, I will tell you that I had a conversation with a gentleman who I didn't recognize. He was talking with a couple of folks down there last time we were open, and he was telling us how much nicer it was to come there than to go to Brannanborough. So I asked him where he was from, if he was from Westminster, and he said, no, Putney. So we're getting some, we're getting some other strays in there. You know, Brannanborough charges. They charge $35 down at Wyndham Solid Waste for anybody, they only take people that are residents of their district. But it's 35 bucks per person whether you're, I mean, even as a resident, and you still pay for your trash, and you still pay for your disposal fee.
So they charge the resident even for a sticker?
They charge for the $35, the annual $35 fee, and they, and they charge. So, you know, that's what we're looking at, you know. The sense is that we're getting maybe some folks from a little farther south, maybe than Westminster. How many? I don't know. I really don't. I see regular people every week that I know that are coming, you know. We're getting a fairly good number from Grafton, but we have been. It's not new. Athens, they're getting curbside pickup too, I believe, out there, but they had asked if they could use our facility. They joined our, the same solid waste district that we're in, and they asked if they could bring stuff like CND, which they pay for, and scrap metal and stuff like that to us. We didn't see an issue at the time because they pay for the CND. If they're getting rid of trash, they pay for it. If they're getting rid of scrap metal, we make money on it. So there wasn't a big push, and I do believe that they're getting curbside pickup on the recycling as well out there, so.
In your food scrap program, it hasn't really brought off to a start, from what you're telling me.
It's, we started when we were supposed to. We haven't had to add a tote yet. We're collecting it all in one tote, and we're not filling it. I guess is the easiest way to respond to that, but no, it hasn't, it hasn't taken off.
When I was down there last, it was only one guy emptying it, it was bucket in there.
We, you know, I think we've, about the fullest we've been in that tote. It's a 48-gallon tote, for those of you who may not know. We've probably, a couple occasions, we've gotten to a half-full tote, but it's empty weekly.
So I have three compost bins at my house, and we compost everything, but I don't compost meat scraps or bones. Are they accepted down at the?
They are accepted at our place.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't work out good for backyard composters because you can't generate the heat in your compost piles to break down the bones. The outfit that we are using say that they're acceptable, they do generate enough heat in the way they're doing it to be able to accept. Basically, their, their motto was, I don't know if it still is, I'm assuming it still is, but back in July was, if it grows, it goes. So basically.
Well, that's good to know.
You know, we, we don't want paper, we don't want some of the, there's a, there's a big difference between what people are calling organic composting and other composting. There's a big difference between hollers, and there's a big difference between folks that are doing it. We went with Grow Compost, I guess is their name, and they do the organic compost.
So the questions in four and five, who's, do we need to answer those, or is, who's going to answer those questions so we can draft up a policy about who's going to keep records, where do they get them, who's going to enforce it, type questions?
That's, tell me.
That would be part of the.
I know Shane and I may disagree a little bit on how, where they get them and how they get them.
Who makes that decision?
Well, I think it's probably you and your policy when you establish it, but.
Yeah. We need to think about practical things. One of, you know, we don't want to hold people up as they're, as they're coming into the facility. It's, already it's difficult, so we don't want to be doing that. Ideally, people would be coming ahead of time and coming to town hall, and one of the things is record-keeping, making sure that whatever records we, I have no problem with doing it at town hall, it might be great, I'll talk to Kathleen to see if she'd be willing to be the person to do it in the clerk's office. But, you know, we'll have to make sure that whatever records we have are in sync with whatever records they may have, because if you've got someone who shows up on a Saturday, they can't just run over to town hall to pick one up, and it's not necessarily appropriate to ask them to do that when their, when their vehicle's full of stuff. So we could maybe hand over on Friday afternoons the list, and so on Saturday you've got it. But at other times, say on Wednesday, they would have, you know, be dispatched over to the town hall. We could just, we could find a way, but it's going to take some growing pains.
Having a handful to sell there as well on a Saturday? If someone pulls in without one, and you don't want to hold them up, you shuffle them over by the?
Right. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. I actually ran into it, right, when my, we were cleaning out my in-laws' place over in Peru. They use the London Dairy Transfer Station, and so we went up and we filled three pickup trucks, and we headed to London Dairy, and when we got there, we found out that you need a sticker. We didn't have it, but they sold us one on-site. I understand they may have changed that. They may be only doing it at their town offices now, but back then, we had to purchase the sticker and then pay for disposal right there on-site. I'm not opposed to doing that. My concern with having too many things in that little shed of ours down there is, we're only there two days a week, those stickers are money. They cost us money, and they're worth money.
We're still doing the transfer station coupons, right?
We're still selling those.
And the Town Clerk is still selling them, is that correct?
Yes.
The Town Clerk's, they're all being purchased.
Well, we're selling them down there too, but I assume that they, they're still selling them at the Town Clerk's. I don't know.
Yeah, I got something even though.
Maybe, I don't know.
And it really isn't a big deal. We used to have a record keeping system, your friend there that works inside, he would come in and get like a couple hundred. We'd write it down. We kept track of everything. It's not a difficult job, so I don't see why the clerk can't continue with that.
Well, if we had a form. If we had a form similar to what you see in here, it doesn't have to be exactly that, but if we had a form similar to that, Bob could, could sell them, you know, have a half a dozen on hand, sell them, and then turn that in with his paperwork, the forms, you know, the cash from it, and then turn that in when he turns the rest of the paperwork in, the deposit in on, I think he brings them in on Wednesdays, I think, after we close. So you'd be getting them every week at the town hall, then they could update the record from, from there if he sold any over the weekend.
You could build in an incentive to get people to do it before July.
Well, we've got two months. If we can get this nailed down, get the policy nailed down, we got all of May and June to get people starting to think about it, come in, and we can just really start flooding the area with the, with the notices and get some, maybe some PSAs out on.
If there's no objection, I'll start writing that thing tomorrow, and then I can zip it in to Shane, and he can look it over and see what he thinks, and add his comments or whatever, then at our next meeting, we can look at it, and like, we can email everybody in the packet, they can look at it, see what they want to think.
And, you know, and even, you know, at, at the facility, you can, you can hand out stuff that says it's common, and here's where you get your tickets, do it early. Can we build an incentive somehow? Anybody who gets in at a certain time has entered into a, you know, raffle or something like that.
Well, I think most of the people, if they know they've got to come to town office to do it, and they know they've got two months, I think they can find the time to pop in.
You'd think that, but I, I'll tell you.
Well, if they don't, it's.
If they don't, then they're going to have to go get one.
We're giving them two months. I mean, we, but, I don't know. I just, I would like to get it, get, start selling the tickets, even though it's not taking effect until July 1, where we're going to enforce it.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty good idea.
I mean, I don't know, we can put it out there, they get two months extra by buying it early.
There you go.
Yeah.
But, I, we're ready to go. It's just these types of, some of the policy stuff that I, I would feel better if it was nailed down rather than me just shooting the dart.
Any other questions? So Peter, you can get that going? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
So we're good with $25?
Yeah, $25, I think is fine.
Sounds like a winner.
It's a good idea to have that on there, that they can, you know, and make them aware of some identification, I mean, apartment dwellers, I mean, they can down there, you aren't good at all, I mean.
And do different towns write that right in their policy? I'll tell you, I've done a lot of research from the different towns and how different places handle it. Some of them require, you know, if they're a renter, they have a rental agreement, a copy of the rental agreement. I don't know how, proof of residency, you know, let's start there, if we need to fine-tune that later, then.
The other thing, too, that people need to be aware of, that if the renter gets The other thing too, that people need to be aware of, that if the renter gets a sticker and then moves out of town, we have no way of knowing that, I mean, because he's already got the ticket in his possession, so if he shows up to dump his material because he's got to pay some more money elsewhere, we're going to have to deal with that, but I mean, that's one of those things, once the sticker runs out in the year.
Right. The stickers, the stickers expire annually, so they're going to be done. If they come back, we've already got their money, so they can come back all day.
What if you sell your car or buy a new car, you got to deal with that also.
Other towns address that by, by saying, like, if you broke your windshield, and there was, that was the other question, of where are we putting these? My recommendation would be lower right corner of the windshield where they're visible, you know, when they come in, and they're not an obstruction to the view in the windshield.
That's legal, that location?
Well, I'm not a police officer.
It is.
It is legal?
That location is, okay.
Long as it's not in your side of the vision.
That's where most of the towns require they be placed, and these are self adhesive on the inside, so they can be stuck to the inside of the window, so they, they need to stay with the vehicle that they're registered to. Like I said, if they had a broken windshield, they had to have their windshield replaced, bring back as much of the sticker as you can to the town clerk's office, they'll check the form and they'll reissue a new ticket, a new permit for the remainder of the year if, if there's a legitimate reason to, to have to replace it. It's a lot like they do with the inspection stickers at the inspection stations.
And would that be the same if you did sell your car and, and there's issues like that too?
Yes, that depends on your policy.
I guess you could come in with the proof of sale.
They, you're going to have it on record.
Well, the other thing, if they go and if there's a broken windshield, they're going to get it repaired at the windshield office, they can bring in a bill saying, I had to get my windshield replaced.
Right, right.
Okay, Tom.
I think it's important that we get a resident verification, like the renters.
Oh, yeah.
And then, person sells their car, breaks their windshield, if they're in the records as that person bought a thing, give them another one, shouldn't be that difficult.
Well, then why don't we just require as a, you know, whether it be utility bill or something, but how about a driver's license, because everybody ought to have one, you know?
Unless they're out of the vote, you know, but, um, the, yeah, I guess, one of the things to think about and put in some together is, what would be those proofs, proofs of residence?
Well, I don't think a renters agreement is, is too much to ask.
You're right there, I mean, some people, you know, they may get electricity and heat included in their rents, I mean, you can't really bring in, you know, if it's not, then, I don't know how many people do that anymore, but, I mean, include the heat and the electric.
Have you looked at policies, have you looked at the policies from other towns?
Glad to hear you folks all talking this, because this is all stuff that, you, you, one question and more come up.
They have a utility bill, they have a driver's license.
Different towns do it differently, it could be, you know, we talked, some towns do it by property tax records, some towns do it by voter registration records, some towns do it by driver's license, some towns do it by mail addresses.
Do you have written policies from other, other towns at all?
Um, yeah, I've got about twenty of them, different, I mean, off websites, not, not exact policies, but, I mean, that's why I left it very plain on this, proof of residency. Right. It doesn't matter to me how they prove it, as long as they can prove it, they're a resident. And if there's a question, then somebody's going to have to make that determination, and that would be the person selling the permit or handing it out.
Well, the town clerk's obviously used to that, because you have to do it when you're voting, getting a marriage license or any of those things, you have to show.
Dog licenses, marriage licenses, I mean, there's always something.
I think with Westminster, we would just give them to Westminster, let them figure it out.
That would be my suggestion, give them a lot.
Because they've got people with Putney addresses and what have you.
Well, that's it, same to Sacagawea, same thing, I mean, you have Westminster people coming in, kind of, they have a P.O. box, they're on Hartley Hill or something, they have a P.O. box in Sacagawea, although I've been told.
Or Chester.
P.O. kind of sorted that out, and they threw those people out, they said they can't use that P.O. anymore for, so they have to go all the way to Westminster to get the mail now.
All right, Annie.
We do have two thousand ticket, uh, stickers. That's all I ordered, because I really had no clue what we were going to need. I counted based on what Wyndham Solid Waste did, I mean, they're a big district, they're selling to a lot of towns, they traditionally, up until this past year, had been selling about fifteen hundred tickets a year, or permits a year. They were over twenty-five hundred when I talked to them back in, I think it was February or so. Their, theirs was on the upswing as well down there since they got out of the recycling and started.
But if you saw you were getting lower, it wouldn't take much time to order more.
The turnaround on them from when I put the order in was about a week, so.
Perfect.
I'm not concerned, they've got it now, they've got the, the design.
Eric, anything further? Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, look.
Oh, I have one other question. At one point, we talked, we, we really had a real discussion about it, about extending the hours. I know you have volunteer and staff issue time, issues, but is that something that we consider, particularly the Saturday, especially the Saturday hours? I mean, because there is a lot of people waiting and backing up, and if we had it, I don't know if it would make a difference if it was open any later or not, but.
Uh, I don't know if it would. I've always been hesitant to add more hours on Saturdays for two reasons, one's selfish and the other one's the volunteers who are already giving up six, six hours a day anyway.
We will be hiring a new part-timer starting July 1, but yeah, that's, you know, there's a lot more resources in order to make that happen.
Yeah. All right.
But it's, I mean, if you want to talk about it, it's worth talking about, I'm not necessarily completely opposed to.
I, I've got comments from plenty of people who have, who've asked for, you know, either another day or extended hours.
I just think it's a lot to ask of volunteers.
No, it is.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you'd have to break up all of your time.
Imagine the winter when it's around zero or ten below, it ain't no fun standing out.
They look forward to that one o'clock hour.
Yeah, you got that right.
All right.
Well, just on, on the facility, we are going to start in on the other compactors. Go out to bid soon on that.
Yeah.
And then, actually, I just want to let you know that there's a discussion going on online about coverings for, for compactors, so I'll send you information on that.
Yeah, we're supposed to get a roof over one of them.
Winter won't end, he has no time.
On my task list.
Yeah, okay.
That's like Genmo pop-up.
Yeah, we talked about that.
All right, thank you, Gary. All right, highway department, review list of recommended roads for paving. So.
Well, I was going to recommend, we have Todd Hinger here, who is our, proposed to be our engineer and to talk about sidewalks, and maybe we can work with him, because Mike's going to be here for both.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
Yep, that's fine. All right, downtown sidewalk engineering proposal.
Yeah, so for sidewalks, I, I, I sent out to the board a proposed contract, and because it exceeds the, theory, the amount that I, as manager, would be able to approve, obviously I'm bringing it to the board. Some of the issues, in, in taking a look, we've already done some work as it is, in sofar as survey is concerned, we, we brought in DeBernardo, and they, they did some work to just look at the, the grades, and they shot all the grades, and that's going to be roughly eighteen hundred dollars, I think that is already, which we have in our budget. But in order to get the other sidewalks done right, we clearly need to have engineering assistance to do that, in that it's, they need to be, maybe Todd, you could speak further to it, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done than just, just pulling them out and put them in the, the way they are. If you can, and also, in addition, I have, we got late on Friday, some sort of order of magnitude and pricing for what some of the, the work might be, and it's, it's pretty high, but I think over time, it needs to get done, and we can at least design this now and implement it in, in stages as necessary. But Todd, did you want to?
Yeah, one of the, one of the main benefits is sort of, it's an opportune time to do it, because you have, you have the bids for the paving project that's going to be happening right out front, it's, that's mid-June, I think you theoretically can start, and a lot of the sidewalks along that section, with just some minor changes, the drainage could be improved quite a bit on the sidewalks themselves, but then also the ADA ramps at some of the crossings, right now are non-existent or pretty hazardous. The, to correct them, it will affect, you know, where the, where we bump into the pavement, so we can fix it now before the pavement, once the pavement's done, you're going to be stuck with what you have. The same thing is true for several of the drainage features out there, on both the east and the west side. Right now, you've got some big puddles that stay right in areas, and they are chiefly responsible for the pavement falling apart as well as, you know, pedestrian safety. So the, in the proposal, we walked the, we walked both sides of the sidewalk, we talked about things that could be improved, and there are some items that will really benefit from some adjustments. If you do it now, we can, we can add curb where the curb is missing, we can adjust the curb where we need to, and on a, sort of a larger planning scale, one thing that, that you have as well is, on the east side, you know where the parking area is, there's perhaps fifteen, twenty car parking past the coffee house?
Eleven.
Was that?
Eleven.
Eleven? Did you count in the picture?
He works, right there.
Oh, do you? And there's, there's a, there's an opportunity right now to adjust the sidewalk, and to make it more like the downtown or the sidewalk, you have the, you have the building, the sidewalk, and then the parking, so when someone backs up, they, or backing up at least in the traffic, that whole section, maybe two-hundred-and-fifty feet, when someone backs up, they back over the pedestrians, or they have the, have the possibility to. But also, if we, if we adjust that sidewalk now, or at least come up with the plan to adjust it, we can fix some of the drainage issues there. Right now, the water comes down the street, sort of runs on the sidewalk the whole way, and then has nowhere to go because the catch, one catch basin that's there, it misses, and then at the bottom of the hill, the catch basin, it, it, it has to make quite a puddle to get into. So if we move the sidewalk, then you'll have nice new paving, and the paving, pavement will be guiding the drainage right into some new, one new catch basin that we would add, and then adjust the catch basin.
Yeah, the sidewalk would go to the backside of that parking area, around it.
Not so sure if I go along with that idea, I.
Yeah, and.
I mean, we, at the Legion parking lot, which is up this end of town, there's more cars up there, and there's more traffic on that end, or almost as much as that. I don't think you've ever, since I've been around, I don't think anybody's been run over over there. It needs to be striped or something, so people know that it's delineated as a sidewalk area, but to change that area to go around, I, I think we're getting involved with some extra, some, some cost and stuff, all that bank is so steep right there, the railroad track, and you're going to have to put fencing and everything else up there, I mean, some kid could roll down over the bank and he's down there on a track before you even know it. I mean, and people aren't going to go around that, they're going to still walk where they're normally used to walk and right down straight, straight down sidewalk the way it currently is. That's my thinking anyway on it.
It's just, it's not ideal, I mean, then.
It's not ideal, but.
It's a pedestrian area, we should, in my opinion, just, you know.
They totally got level of accessories. I mean, you got probably twice as many as that up at the Legion parking lot, we don't do it up there, I mean, and, but, you know, anytime you walked out of here, I mean, it's, it's always an uncomfortable feeling walking down there, you're going to get backed into or something like that, it's always.
Great, Tom, do you have something?
Would the catch basin go in where the puddles are regardless if you move the sidewalk?
Yeah, and the, the challenge right there is, because the sidewalk is sort of the low point, the pavement and the sidewalk just fall apart, you know, they get, they get that water running, and, and if you have a concrete sidewalk against pavement in a ditch, then it's, you're always going to have sort of a battle there.
In the future, you're going to have a ditch of pavement suddenly broken up again, because that water is going to get through the pavement and concrete, like you said, like it's doing now, it's all deteriorating.
I had mentioned before that we do have some, some estimates of cost for, for some of this work, take one and hand it to them.
Another thing we did too, that what the proposal includes, is we take the, we take the plans to eighty-five percent, that is, we get, we think about that, those sort of things, figure out exactly what we want to change, what's going to look different, where are we going to add curb, where are we going to put the catch basins, and then, then I sort of deliver them to you, you can look at them, and then we make any changes we want to make. So at that, at that point, I'll have a better idea of what's the benefit of the sidewalk moving, where is it actually going to go, how does it interface with some of the plans that building owner has for putting a new, the building owner met with us there and wants to have a door on that side, so there's a benefit to having that take place there. So, but with the plan in front of us, we can, we can go through that, we're not going to deliver a hundred percent plans and just say, here, you're stuck with it. We do have one draft plan that would come to you first before we set, and then finalize it for bid.
Where, I'm sorry, where, where scopes one through seven detail, right here?
That's the whole thing, from here up to the top of the hill and, and across to the hula cat back down to the coffee shop, including the sidewalk.
It's just cut up.
That's one to seven.
Cut in pieces.
With.
Well, they're all numbered, and then they're, some are removed for different prices.
Those are other options.
Where are those options?
Yeah, so what I did, what I do is I say.
On this thing?
Number.
Yeah.
They're not showing anywhere.
You mean on the drawing itself?
I'm, I'm trying to understand what the difference in these scopes are, because if we're removing half of them and trying to decide on something, I, I need to know what we're.
We're not deciding.
This is not deciding, the real decision today is, is hiring Todd.
Okay.
And be okay with that, and then working toward getting this done, and it may be that only some can get done this year based upon the money we have.
And do we have to make a decision, don't we have to make a decision on what sections we need to get done before paving?
Well, sooner than later, yeah.
Yes.
So we're making a decision on paying the engineer, and when are we going to make the decision on sidewalks?
Well, I think what we need to do is, is do it and design it, and then get some, get pricing on each phase, and what, I don't think one of the essentials is right in front of the YMCA office, is that handicap crossing right there, to me, is number one, has to be, has to be dealt with. Other sidewalks can last. Yeah, I think any of the curbing work that needs to get done should get done before, that's the really needs to get done before the paving. Just regular sidewalk work could get done next year, you know, once you're using, not using track vehicles and doing it.
So the elevation of most of the existing curbing?
Well, that's a question I had for him, we haven't talked about yet. Curbing elevation versus backside of sidewalk.
Yeah, so, right, some, some locations too, you have, you actually have it where the curbing has separated from the sidewalk.
And I don't know where those are.
And, and part, part of the, the plan will be to sort of wipe, you know, give you a clean slate, again, those areas against the building where we can raise it, we will, some of the, some of the buildings you just can't, so we'll raise it to make a little bit of slope on the sidewalk away, and then the areas where the sidewalk is depressed, is lower than the curb, we'll bring the sidewalk up if we can, or lower the curb if we can. So we go through just sort of, the idea is, can we do the plan, and then when we, when we make the bid package up, we'll set, when you look at this pricing, you'll see that I'm sort of proposing, this is about what I think it's going to cost you, if we pull out this scope, for example, not do the subgrade, and, and then, then the price will go down, but we'll be stuck with whatever subgrade we have, and then.
Is it about the same area, all, all these different proposals, you're just removing a certain phase of the procedure?
If you, if you read, if you read from, you have the pricing that you're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if you look from the, if you look from left to right, it's the same amount of project that is twelve-hundred feet.
Okay.
Is, is from left to right, just, we whittle down the scope.
Sure.
Okay, then you go to the next one, the next one that says, in front of the hula cat, at five-hundred feet, we just don't do that.
The next one?
The next one is, then we remove the section that goes around the parking area and the coffee house, then the next one down is, we don't do anything next to the coffee shop. So basically, we take everything.
The third one was, I'm sorry, second one was no hula cat, I wrote, and the third one would be, anybody here?
Third one would be no YMCA. Third would be no YMCA.
No catering center.
Yep.
Five's gonna stay with all of them regardless.
Yeah, I'm sort of, I sort of have decided, you need to do those drainage features, so I kept that in there.
My question two, regarding the curbing elevation, would be, would it affect the paving? So say, the slope of the sidewalk, this and that, we're about to pave, so if we don't fix curbing before that, is that gonna be, you know what I mean?
You just have to live with any puddling that's on the sidewalk between the buildings and the curb. You can't come...
But the new asphalt should come in about the same height as what's there now?
Yeah.
And that's high enough, the curbing?
Yeah.
In the places, we think? So then...
What, adjusting that curb is not gonna be a lot, not much at all, if we have, what we have to adjust.
Yeah, that's built into the pricing that you're looking at, is adjusting the curb where we need to. But you're right, the...
For the purpose of the slope of the sidewalk, to make sure...
Yes.
For the slope of sidewalk. So when we can lower it, we will.
You're still gonna have the same curve.
But the drawback yet, is, it's really bad to do it after.
Right.
If you adjust that curb after, you pull it out, the road subbase falls down, and you're trying to stand that curb back up, so you really, really can't.
And you said you were going to look at that, right?
Yes. Yeah, this is...
Like even if we raised it up and got the sidewalks, if we had to raise it, curb, whatever, inch and three quarter to make it work later with the sidewalks? So that we could pave and not have to disturb...
No, you'll still disturb the pavement down the road.
Five, hell, are we redoing the sidewalk after?
Yeah, you try to raise that curb, and it's not, you're not gonna be able to do it with that new pavement.
No, I wanna...
It'll break away.
All the curbs before the pavement.
Right, before, right.
Right, so...
Boy, afterwards, you wanna come in and pull that sidewalk? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, certainly. You gotta be careful, but it can be done.
Well, I think, I think what you're saying is that you want, any curb adjustments should be done before paving, no matter what.
Right, if we wanna come back at a later date and puts the concrete back in, we guess.
Right, yeah.
Just gotta be careful, but it's tricky.
Yeah.
It is.
You could, you could...
We've done it, but it's, yeah.
If it's coming in the near term, you can do that. It's gonna be a year or two, you'd wanna sort of do it judiciously, because then people trip and over it.
What's the turnaround on, I mean, if we go ahead and approve this today?
We're gonna, I'm gonna, we're gonna go as fast as we can, because we, we're gonna have, I mean, we're gonna have to be in the two, the three week range, four weeks, because if we don't, then you'll miss the possibility of doing it.
What's the issue with the catch basin right now? You say they're not draining right. Why is that? Is that because the road's not pitched correctly?
Any, yeah, there's any number of things. In one loca, in two locations, you just don't have one. So two, there's two additional catch basins that are gonna be put in. One is offset from the low point of the road, so the water just runs past it. There's any number of reasons why that can happen over time, but, so one is just getting by. And then, then another one's right by the side, right by the, at the very bottom of the hill.
At the core of the flat iron.
Is, the pavement is just adjusted over time and sort of makes it so the water has to pond up to go in.
So wouldn't that be corrected when you do the paving, I would think?
You, you would think so, so if we, any new ones will be in before you pave. That's the benefit. Any that need to be adjusted will be in before they pave. So the mess that we make doing it will be washed away. But the paving project, they're gonna come in there, and they're gonna go as fast as they can. They're gonna do what little grading they wanna do, but pavers aren't really good at, like, spending a bunch of time thinking, thinking about everything.
It's not like in our day, back from your day.
What did...
They just, yeah, they just slap the carpet down and go.
What's happened is that that north side of the flat iron building, it starts to elevate, and you're basically gonna put back what's already out there, it's just gonna be new. You're gonna mill, get the profile of road back, shim it and overlay it. So it's still, there's still gonna be a little incline there, so that's the reason for that basin, so whatever gets past that other one, which it's gonna, doesn't, it's still gonna puddle in that corner no matter what we do. So that's the reason for that basin, that correct. It's gonna come back from the crosswalk at the entrance to the flat iron, it's gonna flow back that way, and it's gonna flow downhill from the existing basin by the crosswalk across from Jim's.
And when you, if you go out, if you go walk, take that, take that little sketch that I have in there, the arrow is pointing right at where we're thinking of putting the catch basin, so you'll be able to stand there, and it'll make sense. You see that right now, even with the street wet, you see that it'll sort of line up.
It was a reconstruction project, we could make that work, by just moving to one basin. If it was a total reconstruction.
Greg, Tom, did you have something else?
Another question I have is, you got down here, number K on this, says develop a conceptual plan for the, I guess it's a flat iron building, and added door in the southern face to allow for future access to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Don't they have one there now, a door that...
They don't. So if you, if you look at that building right now, and you're looking at the big mural, there's no, there's no door there.
There's no door there, but there's one restaurant in the south, right on corner, comes right, well, empties right on the sidewalk, currently. Why would you change the...
Because she wants to put a stoop out there.
Who does?
Right.
The owner of the building.
Well, I guess that's on them, not on us.
So, so this is, the idea of this is just to say, if she gets rights to, I guess, one of the parking spaces there?
Right, right.
She has that area where she keeps her garbage and everything?
The dumpster, yeah.
So if she, if, if we're going to plan this sidewalk right out front, and she's gonna make that change, so that she, because I guess right now, that door, you can't get upstairs, so everybody who wants to come in, has to go in the coffee shop to go up those back stairs?
I don't know that.
I don't know why.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Oh, yeah, shouldn't be on our tab.
I mean, I've seen people coming out of there, so, and they're not coming out of the shop itself.
Yeah.
They're coming out that back door, so I'm assuming, maybe it's their back entrance or escape route, I don't know what you wanna call it, but...
But that's just to consider, her, if we're designing something, you don't wanna design something where she's gonna be doing improvement.
When we go out there and we're planning this sidewalk, if, if we know there's gonna be a new door there, at least we look at that. Like, what is the grade, what is the finish grade of that sidewalk gonna be? So the amount of time for me, the cost of the town, it's not even, it's sort of, it's not a bunch of money. The idea is, we met, the sort of, we met with someone who was, owns one of the buildings, we talk about what their plans are, we hear what their concerns are, and we try and think about that when we're doing the plan. That's it. We're, we're not really doing anything besides that.
Greg.
So I think, all we need to decide on is how much we wanna spend to develop a plan, because we need, we need a plan.
Yep.
And appears we have two options, which amount we would like to support spending to get these plans.
These are estimates of cost, and you do bill on an hourly basis.
Right.
Right, so if something's not done, or it's done extra, I mean, it's all, it's all based upon hours.
Sue.
So you have two different, you have two different options there. One, I'm saying, this is what I think you should do, is the first option has some time for me to help with the bid process, for me to do quantities, for me to deal with any, not deal with in totality, but accommodate any interactions with owners as we try and figure out temporary access to their buildings and things like that when we tear up the sidewalk, and to help the municipal manager get the package put together. That's the first number that you see.
Right.
And Shane, Shane asked me to make sure that I whittled everything out that I could, and if he does everything and I do nothing, then that's the second number.
Question here.
Yeah, Gary?
Yeah, in the general conditions, and it sounds like this is what you're talking about here, of the agreement, you talk about work where there is development projects, that the owner of the building is responsible for pre-construction design for anything that interfaces with your work. So I'm wondering if, if you've already spoken with all the owners, or if not, is there a timeframe that will be in your, an expectation for the owners to be able to do that work? Do you...
Yeah, right. And if the first scope, the first scope includes, includes my time doing that, the second scope does not. So I, the second scope is just, here's, here's the plan, this is the plan, and the municipal employees would have to do all that sort of thing. So I have, in this, in the proposal, I'm imagining that we would develop the plan to about 85%, prepare it, then we can have a public meeting, and any of the, any of the owners or tenants there could come and sort of see what's cooking, if they had any input, they could provide it, and we could adjust things if we needed to.
I just wanna mention, in the highway budget, we do have $24,000 available for engineering, and this would be one project. With the paving project, there would be some need for funding there as well, so just wanted to let you know that.
All right, so what does the board wanna do? Option one, option two? I mean, my sense, timing wise, option one, I mean, 'cause time is ticking away for you, sorry Shane, but I mean, you were, things probably piling up.
Yep.
I think to put a bid, bid on your desk at this point, when you're gonna be heading out the door in a couple months, might be challenging.
Yeah, I would strongly recommend we go with the 16,000 option, because you're right. I mean, there's just so many other things that are going on. We are right now in the process of putting together job ads for Public Works Director, and that individual would be doing that, this, normally this sort of work, but we're not geared up for it right now.
And motion to the board?
But the cost is in the budget. The cost is in the budget.
Yep.
How do you wanna word this? That's the thing.
Hey, you're just gonna pick a number, and you put that in there, that you're gonna wanna make a motion to that.
So I'll move that we go with...
Is there any other discussion, or we're gonna...
Well, we'll have to make the motion, then we'll discuss.
Get it on a table, though, we can fight over that again.
Yeah, all right. So I'll move that we go with the option of 16,500.
Which would include items one through 10?
One through 10. The professional services agreement between walking cam and our engineer.
Is there a second?
And authorize the municipal manager to execute the document?
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion?
I'm gonna be in favor of the other one, just because of the cost. For part of the bidding process, I think that's in the manager's scope of work, and that's where we come in, to help with the bidding process. Which is, that's, that's how I feel. It's $5,000 difference.
I could see that if we weren't in the situation where we have a manager leaving in two months, and...
Engineer's gonna do all the work, and then we're gonna decide how much we can spend to perform the work before paving.
But he won't be doing the bid package in, in the second option? You wouldn't be putting together any of the bids, stuff in the costing and any of that, correct?
I, I would be doing the sidewalk plans?
Mm-hmm.
The specifications for the concrete and such, putting those pieces of paper together and just handing them over. You would have to prepare the bid documents and answer the public questions and...
Is there a way to amend item seven? Is that something we need to pay?
Well, I mean, that's just, this is just an estimate. That is just an estimate of the time, it's correct?
No, but if we take...
What if he could do one, six?
Seven out.
Take seven out?
I mean, public meetings, I mean, we can, it's an agenda item, basically. A public meeting, same as zoning, we don't hire somebody to put that out there.
Yeah, and it could be, it could be that I would end up using half of that anyway. You know, I'm gonna be charging by the hour, and this is what I think, I really think it's gonna cost. But sometimes the public just isn't that interested, and, and we don't spend all that, we don't spend that much time. But the, on the, on the other hand, I spend, a lot of times, I do end up managing quite a bit of public input. You know, it takes quite a bit of time to get everybody on board and to work through their issues. And so this is sort of the middle road for doing that, at $1,500.
I think he needs to be there. Just by going what I went through with Hadley and Oak Street. If I had not been there, we, I'm still not sure they're gonna, how long they're gonna last. They pour in concrete, 90 degrees, 100% humidity, walked away without covering it, and I came upon it. So it's just something simple like that.
Oh, yeah.
You should, gotta make sure the elevations are right, gotta make sure the curbing's right. I'm sorry, it's all stuff I just have time to do.
Wait, that's, that's part of item seven?
It's gonna be.
We're just talking about item seven? Public meetings, outreach, correspondence with local boards?
I don't have that, I don't have that sheet.
That's the part, that's...
That's 1,500 bucks.
Okay. I thought we were talking about construction inspection.
No, that's not...
I don't, is that in there?
No, it's not in there.
I have it on my sheet. I must have it.
You're gonna do a construction inspection?
I'll do the construction inspection, but that will depend on the actual scope that gets picked. So if you look at the budget figures, the budget numbers?
Hmm.
That is line seven in the budget. Sorry, I did the, I did the proposal, and use word number seven, seven, some of the paperwork.
That's where I'm confused.
But this is, we don't know what we're doing. We're just trying to get a plan. And then, to execute the plan, we don't know how much that's gonna cost.
Yeah, so if the bids all come in, you're gonna pick from the bids, you're gonna say, we can get this far. And then, so you only have to pay me for construction inspection to do that, that bit, however far you get. So I, it steps down with the scopes. In the budget, you see line, the item seven, it jumps down quite a bit.
Okay.
You know, we start, we start at maybe 6,000, then we go down to 4,000. And it may be, it might be less than that. If you have a big crew, and they're really making good time, then it's gonna be less than that. If you have two guys with tool belts, it's gonna be more.
Okay, I'll go to Gary first.
So was the 16,5 and not to exceed, and if the public meetings and stuff aren't in there and there's less hours, it could come in less?
1,500.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, doing this scope of work, I don't, I don't see why it would be, why it would be more.
I would make that amended.
My contract isn't set up as not to exceed, you know, per se, but just based on what I know about the project so far and all the details. We have already, I've already seen the survey, you know, we've already got that in, so I think it could potentially be less.
Greg.
How much did you say was in the budget for engineering?
24,000.
Engineering for sidewalk?
Highway department.
So we're, we're considering spending 70% on a section of sidewalk where we only may do a small portion?
We're toward the end. We haven't spent anything this fiscal year, so we've only got...
We may have a person that will fill the position that could continue to...
Not for the sidewalk, but...
Okay.
Because that'll be, that's not till July 1st.
Yeah.
The survey they got done, who paid for that and where the funds come from for that?
That's out of that $24,000.
The cost there, because that could reduce the...
1,800.
How much?
1,800.
1,800, so you're down to 22 something.
Back just one more time?
Yeah.
The item seven in your proposal is the part that I, I think...
Public meetings.
If we could remove that part, I would be more in favor of what, what you'd helping throughout the process.
That's fine with, anything's fine with me. I put those stars all there, like, you can do it if you want to. I will point out too, that another thing that you see stepping down, if it's helpful as you try and make a decision, is if you presumptively eliminate any of the scopes now, if you said, we're not, we're not even gonna touch the part of the sidewalk by hula, you can take that out now, and I won't even design it. And, and so, so as you were writing down the steps there, for what the first part includes And so, so as you were writing down the steps there, for what the first part includes with the next part, like the second one, if we eliminate that, then the engineering's going to be a little bit cheaper, right off the bat. I'm not suggesting you do that, but I give you that option. That's the numbers, you can see for six, for the engineering, it starts at 16,500. And then if you only do the one side of the road and drainage features, take it to the other extreme, all the way down to the bottom, you see it's 11,550.
And if, for some reason, we do, I mean, you would attend a public meeting, so then you would be hourly charged to us for that. And if they had to do any correspondence, it would be hourly charges for that, correct?
Yeah, but with public meetings, you're also talking about one-on-one meetings with the public.
Right.
Right? Not just...
But I'm saying, if that had to happen, then it would, we would, it would be an hourly charge, if you had to do that, for whatever reason.
Yeah, but I would, if you, if you eliminated those from the scope, I'd be presuming that when people called me and said, hey, I want to go over the plans with you, I would say...
Come to the public meeting.
Well, like, one of the issues that comes to mind is with the, where we have to change...
YMCA?
Yeah, the YMCA, there, by virtue of dropping that curve there, we have to do something with, we have to create some kind of barrier on their property, so that people don't trip and fall into it. So we need to coordinate with them, and that's the sort of thing that, I'm not prepared to do that, Mike's not prepared to do that, because it's engineering solutions that I just can't do, you know? That's when we would have to have him there for that. Well...
That's not included in developing a project plan?
It's, it's on an hourly basis, so it's, an hour's an hour.
Yeah, so, let me just give you this example. Is that, if that's your, if that's your place, developing the plan is, I would drop the sidewalk, create the handicap access. Right now, those, that place can walk up, they can, have one giant long step. So I would show all the changes.
I'm not questioning your plan at all. I think you're going to have a great plan. I'm questioning the two different line items for the cost. If that's part of developing a plan, having to talk to a person that you may infringe on their property, that's part of developing a plan, is it not? And if it's hourly, why, why are there two different line items?
Good question.
So, yeah, so the, one is, the cheapest price is, I take the survey plan, I go back to my office, and I develop the plan, and then I hand it over. I'm not, you know, doing the plan, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be talking to anybody. I would just do the plan.
And if that's what the board wants to do, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
It needs to be optimal, but it's fine.
Lastly, I also feel like this is all based on how much work he does. This number is based on how much work he actually does. The cost could be significantly lower than this, if we say, here's what we would like to address, so we can pave. Or we can say, spend that much, and give us a plan of everything for future. Right? It's based on how much work he does.
Correct. So that means, Amy, do you want to discuss the hula cat option not, at this point, or...
I just, I think, right now, we just need to approve this, right? And then we're going to decide what we want him to do, or someone is.
Right.
So I'm in favor of...
So then, approve, we have a motion on the table, which was, what again?
Full, one, item one through 10.
One through 10 at 16,500.
Okay. So, looks, sounds like someone is interested in amending that to exclude item seven? Is that what you're saying?
After all the discussion, you know, I don't think he's going to spend that much. I think he's going to incorporate it in other phases of the scope of work. It's what it sounds like, it's just explained.
Okay.
Right? Does everyone else feel differently, or...
Yeah, we'll do what we can to keep the price down, and keep the hours down. I'm not going to have him call neighbors and stuff, I would be doing that, my, you know, we would, we've already done some of that already. But, you know, we'll, we'll keep the cost as low as we can.
Okay. So are you ready for a vote, then? All in favor?
Aye.
What are we voting on?
The option, the one through 10.
What kind of, 16,5?
For 16,500.
Not to exceed, correct?
Correct. Well, the board has made a motion in the past to, you know, anytime the board approves a contract, any, any change to that has to come back to the board.
Okay. Go along with that.
Okay. It's all fair.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. But, yeah, so again, this is the order of magnitude on some of this work, and so we really need to work on how much money we have in, you know, already, and see what we can do.
When do we do that? Like, this is a part now, when do we find out what we need to do, and...
He starts tomorrow.
This is what we have, is the 228, 821?
Starts tonight.
Or no?
I'm sorry, say again?
This is what we have?
Oh, yeah.
Two weeks.
Or 260, 321, no, that concludes. This chart, I think, is what we have.
Yeah, that I sent out, yeah, we have, we have dedicated some to, I emailed that out at one point. How much?
You've got one and a half allocated for Saxon River, and if you don't do anything in Saxon River, they're going to be all over you, I'll tell you that. So you're going to spend all that money on...
228, 821.
Yeah.
So you only got 228, 229.
Yeah, you've got 228 to do it this year.
You shouldn't spend Saxon River money, I wouldn't think, but that's up to the board.
I just, but to get back to this, we're on a time restraint with this, because they're paving June 18th. So, just to continue, how, how are we going to meet again to approve his recommended work before paving? In two weeks? That's going to be, we're going to be in the mail.
I don't know if you can do a turnaround in two weeks.
We'll have to, we'll have to figure that out. We'll have to maybe have a special meeting. But I think what's critical is getting done what needs to get done to support the paving project. So that we're not back here next year digging up what we just put in. That would be a crime.
How long is it going to take you to come up with this?
I, I think it's, well, the whole...
You're trying to, the planning, whole thing, that's just...
Yeah, it would take me three, three weeks, probably.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that gives us a window we're looking at.
If we, we want to, do you want to start, you know, solicitation, or get it on the radar screen, or screen of whatever contractors you like?
What would you know?
Yeah.
Because once we get it from you, then we've got to decide how much money we have to play with, and what we're not going to do, or not, or going to do, at that point. So, we could be a month out yet, so you're looking end of April, end of May rather, somewhere around there. And you have the holiday coming up, and then you're going, June, what, June, right after alumna, you're supposed to start paving?
That's when they can, it's not necessarily when they are...
Okay, so, that's when they can.
In the bid, in the paving bid, do they have that, can they start at the one through five section, and leave, and do section six last, last?
They could, we haven't specified, but they could, yeah.
They could do that.
Otherwise, one of them's going to be pushing the other, by the looks of things.
Yeah.
But isn't there a date of completion in there?
Yeah.
Paving contractor?
Yeah.
Looks to me like it's going to be a late start to the construction season, the way it's going.
I do, I do know that they're interested in doing old turrets first, getting that done.
Is there a way to prioritize what has to be at least moved or installed before paving?
As soon as I find out what his plan is, yeah, we'll know better.
That's what we'd like to see happen here.
Yeah, okay, so it sounds like we may have to have, time wise, we may have to call a special meeting. Other, because, because it looks like it, with three weeks, we're waiting on the first week.
What do you, what do you mean, every two weeks, or...
Every two weeks, yeah. So the next one would...
It's possible we can have it to 85% in two weeks, you know?
Okay.
I would, I, I would put, if you had the time, put it on the agenda, and then we'd do our best.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. All right, anything else?
It's going to be tight, it's going to be tight.
It's going to be tight.
Real tight.
We'll get it done. Positive.
I'll coach you on that.
Positive.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so now review list of recommended roads for paving. So, we have...
You recall that Everett Hammond was here at the previous meeting, and one thing, I handed out, I emailed out and handed out to everybody, revised version of his 2018 plan. Mike and I sat down with him, and went over, trying to figure out what we can do this year, what really needs to be done. Recognizing the interest from, expressed by the folks in Saxon's River, to get some work done there. Trying to work, obviously, on the downtown work, but also to preserve the work that was just done years ago, on Rockingham Street, get hit Canal Street, and also even overlay west, you know, from Church, Church Street, Westminster Street, to bring that out to Earl Street, just give that a overlay.
Buy it all in brand new.
And all that work comes in at roughly 680, some odd thousand dollars. And I provided information to the board indicating that, all told, we have roughly seven, almost 740,000 dollars available to, for all these, all this work this year. This is not touching the capital reserve fund that was established.
One question. The one, two, third, Rockingham Street?
Yes.
The bridge to Rockingham Street, what?
To the pump station, bump past, go a couple of rounds.
Oh, okay.
That's in rough shape, we got to do something with it now, or we'll be doing a lot more than a...
Mill shim and overlay, all that?
Yeah. Was it, wasn't there, Mike, an issue with the sidewalk crossing there too? Somewhere, was there, and across from the fire station also?
Yeah, I, yeah, that whole sidewalk, I mean, that whole bank sloughing up.
And then how about the drain intake, or whatever, manhole cover that they had the, there's maybe a barrel out there now for...
Yeah, we got to fix that, it's just a couple of rolls of brick, they're deteriorating.
Okay.
Soon as they start making hot mix, we're going to do it.
Right.
And then, so from pump house to the bridge?
Yeah. Overlay chip seal, yeah.
And then chip seal on that other fairly new stuff?
One of the things that, I think there may be someone else who wants to put in a sprinkler system, I think the old, what's it called, Ramon Pretzel? I've heard that they may want to do that, and so it'd be good timing to get that done soon, and then before the overlay work, the other chip seal work, excuse me.
And that's the time to do it?
Yeah, it would hide that.
I hate that they want, they should have done it when we did the project, but whatever it didn't happen.
Well, I'm, I'm not even sure they want to do it, I just, I heard...
Well, if you do it now, if they want to do it, do it now.
That's about the last one left, isn't that what we said?
I hope so. Any thoughts? I mean, it looks feasible to me.
I think it's great.
Saxon River will get done, which is important.
Yeah, Main Street and Saxon's River and Pleasant Street, you know, just an overlay of Pleasant, and mill, mill shim overlay.
You're going to do, you've got, all of Pleasant Street needs to be overlapped.
Right up to Shawn Campbells, yeah.
What are we talking about, all the way up to...
Right up to where the dirt meets the asphalt, yeah.
I mean, I can see the upper half of that, but I mean, the lower half doesn't look all that bad.
Well, it's falling apart.
It's rough.
We were going to do it several years ago, but the board opted not to. When we did the Riverside, when we did the East Side, the River Street side and all that, we were going to jump over the other side, and it was removed from the budget.
And so, based upon these changes, this is taking, you know, different ones from a couple of years out, and bringing them all into one, one, you know, 2018, that seems to make sense.
This was a goal, some of the previous board members, to get all the ins and outs to the business district done, and then now it's going to happen, it's going to, and with the Route 5 project done, we're going to be in really good shape.
This includes Canal also, which is in tough shape.
Yeah, Canal's bad, if anybody's been down there, it's real bad.
And it's also tackling this, like, I found this quite fascinating, we're, we're going to do some preventive maintenance to, so we can stop having debris consdrop.
Right, it's just, you know...
Chip seal's a big deal, it really is.
So that leaves, what, 40 something-ish? I didn't do the math, but that, we can just...
Knocked down.
What's that?
You've got, you've got six streets here, that says, doesn't include...
Structure work.
Structure work.
A lot of that's just going to be...
You could probably eat up at least half of that with structure work.
There will be some structure work, I mean, some of it's highway, some of it's water and sewer. But we'll do what we can get done.
So does the village eat the water and sewer part of it, or...
Well, we do have, we do have money in both water and sewer for, for this sort of...
I'm just asking a question, Mike.
Yeah, I'm giving the answer, yeah, they do have money, and, you know, we have 30,000, I know, in water, for main type of work, and, you know, that's for this year, and we have the same amount for next year, and then, we need to take a look at it, but we'll do what we can.
I make a motion, we approve 2018 ma, sorry, maintenance financial plan? Is that work on it?
Yep, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Answer a question? Get that page out.
I'm sorry, what?
It's kind of confusing me here. You got Westminster Street from School Street to the square, I didn't know School Street came out there.
It's not a church, it's Church Street.
And then you got Earl Street to School Street.
Yeah, it's still Church, it's still Church Street.
Earl Street was held down by Bond Auto.
Supposed to be Church Street, Earl the church, and then Square the church. Yeah, I said something a little about it, but it will be changed.
Check in.
Confuse me too.
It's okay, I look at the...
People think Church Street just runs up along Baptist Church up to the Episcopal Church, but actually, you get it down by...
I don't know why that ever got to change that way, but...
I don't know why either.
Okay.
All set? Thank you.
We survived the storm already, I assume?
We did, yeah.
I see there's another Culver and Cambridgeport Road going up.
Yeah, one on Cambridgeport Road, and one on Turnpike Road, they both got to be replaced. They both, sorry, Frost must have moved them, that's the only other thing.
Are they paving 103 again?
They are.
Yeah.
Starting soon.
And Route 12 project starting next week.
All the way up to...
Longford.
Yeah.
Flanagan?
From, in Rockingham side, I think they're just doing a overlay or something, right?
Yeah, yeah, just overlay. And, like I said, Route 12 starting next week. That's a three-year project.
That's from Charlestown.
Oh, darn.
Yeah, it's going to be one of the traffic issues.
How long's that going to run? They can run all summer, probably?
Boy, I bet you...
You guys are wheeling it.
It's going to run in a year.
Real pain in the, you know what, to get up there.
I take the interstate, so...
I thought they were... They're actually going to build that road out into the river.
Yeah.
I thought they were going to rail.
It was, well, it's, it's cheaper...
Right.
And timelier to...
Yeah.
Build into the river than it is to move the rail.
To move the rails.
Yeah, I know, because it'd be six years trying to get something down the railroad, it's probably longer.
Exactly.
They ain't going to move, they ain't got to.
Railroad has a lot of authority that some people don't realize.
You can't wipe that, it's like...
Same gentleman that was from the GAF committee over there, the same here, is the one that was heading over there, heading that up. So, it's great, because it's way overdue.
They won't work right through the way.
Okay, now we're just having discussions, so let's, let's move on. Thanks a lot, Mike.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, select board items.
We're all set.
Yeah, Peter had a question for later, so.
Point Traffic Safety Committee, we had some interests. Were there any others that came in?
I have, file Kerry.
So how many appointments were we looking to make here with the, on the other side?
Kelly Tully.
Yeah.
Peter Golick.
Mm-hmm.
Joe Brissette.
Mm-hmm.
Cass Wright.
Mm-hmm.
Andrew Smith.
Mm-hmm.
Ron Lake. And just one, one issue is that Stephen has been appointed by both boards.
Well, he hasn't appointed anyone yet.
I had that same question, Shane, are we gonna problem because of, if he gets appointed, we got three select board members.
Right.
Which create a quorum, which creates, then, it's, it becomes a select board meeting, not a committee meeting.
Right.
Even though you aren't representing the village, you're on both boards, and it's, 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 could be an issue with open meeting law.
Yeah.
Good thing you caught that, Shane, 'cause I was, I had that written right down here.
Well, Kerry called, yeah, I'll cut it.
Yeah, okay, I wonder if she would've caught it, yeah.
So do we have an opinion or a thought there, or what?
Well, as soon as we have three members of a board talking about something under the, over which the board has some regulation or authority, then it can, becomes a board meeting.
So then, that means just appointing one select board? No? I mean, 'cause you've already been appointed.
Yeah.
As trustees. Correct? We can only appoint one, in that case, in the select board.
No, he's been appointed by the village, not by the town.
No, I know that.
Well, I don't know.
But if there's three, I mean, if you're, you can only talk to the town, I guess? I mean, to the village, sorry?
Sorry, if we had to execute a decision, that's, would be my loose interpretation of that, but I don't honestly know what the exact, I mean, it'd be something for the Secretary of State to.
If we went back and looked at the minutes, were Peter and I appointed from the select board?
No, we haven't appointed a select board, yet.
Appointed from the select board, yeah.
We've expressed interest so far.
Well, knowing that we had to have two from the select board, why would the trustees appoint a member that's on both?
Because he wasn't at the meeting.
Oh, that was nice, too. Great for that one to come up.
Well, also, how many, I mean, at this point, we have, it's, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, that's ten.
You've got ten?
We accept all of the people of interest, expressed interest.
Four, six, and then four on the bottom. Run the next page, and they're, they're all listed.
Oh. I mean, is ten unwieldy for this committee, or is that, you think that's fine?
I think that we need some clarification on what I would do, because I don't wanna muck up the works here either, as far as it comes to, you know, the operation of this committee, or a question in the open meeting, you know. Trying to think of similar instances, like the fire committee or something, where I sat there and you had a select board person.
But you only had two.
Right, they only had two.
Right, I, I don't think there's any question, you can't have three board members sitting at a table, talking about anything dealing with the town.
No.
So, yeah, without it being leading.
Best if I lose myself from that, to some extent, or what? And they recruit another trustee to sit on that, in that capacity.
Yes, means you weren't even at the meeting when they appointed you, right?
No. So I don't know how to take that.
Okay, so, is that what you'd do, then?
Yeah.
Ask the trustees to appoint another?
Yep.
All right. And so then, we would be appointing Gaetano, Peter, Deb, Mike, Ron, Kelly Tully, Cass Wright, Joe Brissette, and Andrew Smith. Would the staff would be full committee members, or, I mean, would, I guess they attend when they, I mean, important mics there, but, would they be attending as staff, or, or would be appointing them to the committee as staff?
Both residents, you know, and so they kind of have dual, dual reason to be there. I don't see any reason why they, they wouldn't be voting members, but that way, they have to attend all the meetings.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Are you sure you want that, buddy?
Didn't know anything about it till now.
Oh, I thought.
Yeah, you didn't know that you were volunteer, just like Peter, I mean, like Stephen was?
You didn't know that?
It should be an issue, because there's, there's probably gonna be times that not everybody's gonna be able to make it, so I mean, you know, if we appoint you, it's fine if you get any.
I don't see why I can't.
But if, you know.
Could be a long process.
I love meetings, can't you tell?
Yeah, we can tell.
I already tried to send them home, they went cold.
Okay, so do, motion?
You want a motion?
Yes.
So I will move that we appoint the following members to the, what are we calling this? The Traffic Safety Committee.
Right.
From the select board, Gaetano Putagnano and Peter Golick. From the trustees, Deborah Wright, and we're going to look into another trustee leader, is that right?
Yes.
For this, from the staff, Mike Kynes, Highway Superintendent, Ron Lake, BF Police Chief, and others, Kelly Tully from Coda and Coda, Cass Wright, Joe Brissette, and Andrew Smith.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, thank you, Andrew, for putting your hat in the right.
Can I, just mention one quick thing? Since, the way I picture this committee is it's essentially serving at the pleasure of your board, will your board be setting forth your desired scope of the committee? So, you know, the committee has some.
A charge.
Work to begin with.
We should, yeah.
You know, the committee won't be an autonomous, you know, group, and I understand, you know, as a committee, it doesn't have any authority, it's just, it's gonna be coming back to your board with, with what it, what it's learned, or what its findings are.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, if we could start with some, some scope of what you're looking for, that'll be a big help, might save a lot of time.
Makes sense to have some target, what we're shooting at, rather than just go willy-nilly and kind of just sit around and talk, right?
Well, wasn't part of the most recent rescinded motion, it wasn't the end result saying we would form a committee to discuss this?
Right. It's supposed to be something with the weight limits.
Good place to start.
Weight limit destruction and, and, you know, changing some areas of the road, but that's not in the committee's purview, but we can make suggestions, it's in the, it's in the select board's purview to make any road changes, because they have the control over town roads, so.
Maybe the committee itself could, could make a recommend, recommendation on what they like to govern, it could be also a standing committee, because the traffic stuff does come up from time to time.
That's true.
Adjustment issues, bike issues, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, maybe the things to bite off, right off, right off the bat is, is overweight vehicles, truck traffic in general, and, and vehicular, oh, street geometry in the downtown. But it's not just the downtown, it's also elsewhere in the community.
Does Kerry have everybody's email list that's gonna be on this committee?
I imagine.
Only, only for notification purposes, and when we call the meeting.
Well, if we don't, we'll get it, she's pretty good at it.
I would just think.
Yeah, I think they all, at least the, the four others emailed her with their interests.
I emailed, too, so it's, of course, my thoughts are anyways.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on.
So do we wanna, do we wanna do any goals for this committee, or do you wanna just take a general discussion and, Tom, are you shaking your head, you got policy, or what?
No, I think we could report back as to what, what direction the committee.
I know, we got a general idea what we're trying to discuss, truck weights.
I think that's, there's enough stuff to start.
And then we're still in limbo with that change in the village thing, and Shane may have some input on that when he comes back from this legislature. So I, I know that whole thing, according to BSA TV news, I don't want back to committee, so.
Do they expect they're gonna vote on that this year?
I don't know.
What, transportation and this? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in the bill, the bill was approved by the Senate this morning, Senate and.
Oh, they did approve this morning, yeah.
Yeah, so now it's over at the House.
Yeah, right.
House Transportation, excuse me, Senate Transportation approved it, now to House Transportation.
Okay.
And they're, they're having a hearing tomorrow.
Yeah, so that'll give some guidance.
Okay.
All right. Discuss the USAD, USDA.
The Green Street.
Oh, sorry, I did skip over me.
You really skipped a long one.
I am. I spent my whole day doing two sets of taxes, so my brain is fried. Nothing like having your organization taxes and personal taxes due the same day. Consider bids for 38 Green Street. Did we get any?
We did.
Yay.
Ooh.
We received two bids, and, I'll give them to you to open.
All right.
One has two envelopes.
Two envelopes.
So we could take a choice of the higher, the lower, no, no, I don't, I think they may have misread the way the, the order's sent, sorry.
The first is from Sharon Bocelli, for eleven thousand. Okay, and then the second is for four thousand four, from Nina Nichi, Nichi?
Nichi.
Nichi? This must be her check, yeah. All right, well, I think we know where we're going with that one, right?
What was the other one?
Eleven thousand, Sharon Bocelli.
No, I mean, the other envelope.
It's, it's a check.
Oh.
You have to have a certified check.
So is there, does she state any intentions on that?
Um, bid is based on the liability and work involved with regards to derelict barn on the property in need of substantial repair, and to build a home within the footprint allowed, a curb cut would be necessary to allow for a driveway as setbacks have changed in the buildable area. I've been a property owner in Bellas Fall since 2006, and have undertook a substantial restoration of commercial property on Canal Street for my business purposes, I value this community and look forward to retiring. And nothing in addition to.
So Shane, I'll ask you the magic question. If we accept the bid, would we be accepting it with, with restrictions of what can be built there, or?
No, we didn't advertise that.
Okay, I, I just wanted to figure out.
We didn't recommend any kind of covenant or anything like that, it's free and clear. One thing that does need to happen is there needs, there's, there's a provision of law, I can't remember what it is, 24 VSA's, 1061 or something, where they have to have a, they have to give notice of the, of the sale, and a certain number of days have to pass.
Sixty days.
Yeah, certain number of days have to pass, and then, then the, then the title can pass. So I think I would recommend that the board move to accept one of the bids, subject to, is it 24, whatever it is?
Twenty-four VSA 1061A.
Do we know what that property value would be as it sets now?
Assess value?
Yeah, assess value, what it'd be, I mean.
I don't know.
I know, we got, we're looking at a bit of eleven grand, but I mean, I just wonder if it's thirty thousand, so I don't know what a village lot goes for, I can't remember.
Wasn't somewhere there around thirty?
I don't know, I'm just throwing that number out.
We don't really know, we know what we have into it.
Yeah.
Oh, you're never gonna get what you have into it, it's just a matter of what happens to the.
It'll be back on the tax rules.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm just trying to figure out, you know, we're taking eleven, plus we're gonna get tax money over the years, and if she builds a house on it, it's gonna go up in availability anyway, so.
All right.
So, can I just add my two cents? Nina is the abutter, and I'm assuming she would just extend her property. Sharon is going to renovate the barn and build a house, which is gonna generate more taxes.
Right.
So, my vote is for Sharon.
Well, if that's the case, I don't have a problem making a motion to that effect, then. Okay, I'll make the motion that the Rockingham Select Board accept the bid from Sharon Bocelli in the amount of eleven thousand dollars for the property located and identified as 38 Green Street, parcel number 234400038, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 1061A. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Get on the tax roll, yes.
Thank you.
Be nice to have something on that.
Well, we do have to go through this process, you know, so I don't anticipate anything coming out of that. What I would do is also, I'll be returning the check to Nina.
Okay. Now we can discuss the USDA grant.
There we go.
I'm really trying to rush this meeting, I don't know.
Can't tell the blame.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of mentioned it before, but I had gone to a conference and actually sat down with one of the heads of the regional USDA, and he'd, I talked to him about our, our project here, and he said, you should absolutely apply for a facilities grant, it'd be perfect, because it, it deals with ADA compliance, and it's an historic building, and it met every one of the check marks in their requirements, and so, we're good to go on that, it'll be fifty thousand dollar grant, and, well, we will have to get some, get some prices from, from suppliers, there's not that many people who do this. I have Robin Sweetapple, who is working with me, she's not only an architect, but also does grant work, so she put together the grant for us, and with very good success, she's been following up, so, that, you know, just wanna make sure you knew about that. It hasn't cost us a lot, but it's been, obviously, been very successful. So, we got a call for, an email from USDA, they wanna meet this next week with both myself and with Susan to go over whatever paperwork needs to be done, and so I just wanted the board to authorize us to sign any documents that are necessary to accept the, the grant. So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? I have, what did you say again, that we think it's going to, the total cost of the?
Well, we had gotten estimate from our, the guy, the people who do it for us now.
Baystate, I believe.
Yeah, Baystate Elevator, and I think the number was ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Something around a hundred grand, yeah.
And that was from 2015, they said that they would honor that price as late as this last year, because the USDA rules, we have to go out and get bids, so we'll, I'll have, Robin help out with, with that.
And there's still funds in that bond account?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's quite, yeah, there's enough to, which frees up money that we can do the steps outside in the alley, and, you know, a few other things, and I was waiting on those other projects until I heard more information about, about this elevator grant, so this is, this is good news.
Okay. Any, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We don't need to review, okay, review overtime and comp time report. I was just thinking winter was over.
It is, but look at it, it's just a pair when they keep it there.
It is, but wait till we see next week, right?
We may have a mud season yet.
I know. Any concerns on that? No. Okay, review items for the next meeting, May 1st. Looks like we, ideally, we'll have the sidewalk.
Where are we at with the town highway, the highway employee?
Those were due Friday, Kerry was, has been out, we have a folder full of stuff for you.
There were several.
Right, and the maintenance position, I'm looking over those applications now, I've got five or six, so that, we got that. Public Works Director, I've gotten job descriptions and ads from about five other communities that are actually, have been doing it over the past month or so, and I'll just, I'll put something good together that meets our needs. So, yeah, we're moving along on those.
Okay, so sidewalks, there's something else, or just, can we just talk about something else?
Just, I don't, this can go another big, that's.
Yeah.
Another question, man?
Anyway, if you think of anything for the next meeting, let us know, 'cause it can't be just one item. Agenda items for the joint board meeting, which is now May 29th, ideally, we should have a report from our, this committee, Transportation Committee, there's a call for you.
When is it? May 29th?
May 29th.
Would there likely be a meeting before that, for the hiring process?
Of the joint board?
Yeah.
Quite possibly, yes.
Yeah, let me think about that.
Yeah, there probably will be. All right, review and approve order bills and warrants.
I have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I have also questions.
Well, I can clarify one thing.
Similar questions.
On the Steve and Cuda bill, that was not for the new manager, that was a bill for December work, that he did for us.
Who's that?
If you notice in here, there was a bill just for Parker and Cuda. If you notice in here, there was a bill just for Parker and Cuda.
Oh, yeah.
That wasn't for the new manager. The memo says new manager work, it's not new manager work, I mean, not the manager that we're hiring work, it's for a discussion we had, Joint Board, I believe, way back in December. So, just to clarify that.
Sure.
Gaetano?
My question is, you tend 10 and 1/2 church fire protection, I assume, what ran out of space, payment to the village, the amount of $1,939.30.
That was a water bill, I believe, that was in, had not been paid, and I wasn't sure-
It says fire protection.
But if you look at the actual bill, if you look at the actual bill-
Fire protection portion of the bill.
$1,000-something dollars?
Yeah.
No, I think it was a water bill that was not, had not been-
Did we have that, have we taken that building over, is the town taking that building over yet?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's September.
So that's probably, as Sue says, it's probably a water bill that was due to-
When you look at the actual invoice, it, there was fire depec-, but fire protection was like, I don't know, $3 or something, but there was a water, unpaid water-
Delinquent?
-delinquency in there, and I just don't know why it was never, if we took it over in September, why we hadn't paid it then. I don't know what took so long for it to catch up.
I don't know, I didn't see that.
So, this is for the last owners neglecting to pay their water bill. We inherited their-
We inherited that, yes.
We can't go after them for that?
We can't go after them for anything. It's why we inherited that.
Well, it was a bankruptcy issue, but, you know, there is the property next door, and I have asked the village attorney to, or, Ray, who's a town agent working on this, to see if there's any way that we can, you know, attach that property, or some other property, to try to get some money back, and the answer has always been, you know, because of bankruptcy, it was not possible, but I'll try one more time, see what we can do. Because we're about to, you know, we're about to enter into a, you know, demolition project, it's not going to be good financially.
Gaetano?
Just looking through these other fire protection ones, there's an 8-cent charge to, these other three abandoned buildings that have now since been demolished, but are we, are we really writing a check for 8 cents? Check number is listed for the amount, 8 cents, three different times. Hyde, Green-
Page, is that top right?
Page two, possibly.
Old Terrace.
Back of the first page, page one.
8 cents.
Three different times we're writing a check. For Hyde Street, Green, Old Terrace. I mean, if these are old water bills-
I don't believe they're actual checks.
Says check number.
Right, I think it's-
Oh, they're all the same.
I don't think it's a paper check.
Is it 8 cents for an abandoned building, is that?
I don't know why it's-
It's not so much the amount, as curiosity is.
Yeah, why would you spend, you probably spent some time doing it, which costs $10 just of your own time, but I'll find that out.
Yeah, it's all in one check.
It is.
Yeah.
Right.
But it just seems funny, 8 cents, I mean, like-
Yep, I'll find it out.
All right, anything else? Peter, did you-
Are you done?
Are you done, Gaetano?
I am done, yes.
Peter?
The two laptops, were they just replacements? One of them was from a year ago, that we, I thought we had paid that off, that was, actually, when I first started, that was a computer we picked up. And the other one was for the development office.
CLG, yeah.
But those were purchased long ago, and for some reason, Dell didn't bill us till just recently, so one of them was-
They usually give you quite a long time, you get like 0% loans for-
We didn't ask for a loan, I thought, I thought that had been taken care of a long time ago through Theo and Nimrick, but we never got an invoice.
Quite a difference in the numbers, you notice that, one, yours was $602, and the other one's $2,215?
Oh, mine was allocated between town and village.
Oh, okay.
I did-
And the other one was not just a CLG, but it's also a couple of thin clients, which are these, they're only $400 bucks a pop, you know, we got three of those, including one from mine.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's more than one, then?
Correct.
Okay.
And, yeah, mine was allocated, and we had another one for, in the finance office, that was allocated, so it's, we have to-
I just, I've seen the number, it just looked funny, that's all.
Anything else?
One I already talked to Mike about, on page, not a seven, a rear suspension on a 2014 Freightliner, Mike tells me he thinks that should have been covered by warranty. It's only a four-year-old truck.
I figured out what it was, the center pin broke on the spring stack, keeps it in line between Ubolts over the spring perch, well, that broke, and when he went on a pre-trip, the guy found the leaf spring sticking out. Wally had hurt his back, he was out, Wally's been out for two weeks, it's a back injury, so I had, I needed it for the storm.
Oh, yeah, I don't-
But I sent it to the Patriots, when I got the invoice, I called Wally and I questioned it, and he was going to look into it, and for whatever reason, it didn't, you know, because he was out, he didn't get it done, but that invoice, I had actually held in my folder, and probably in my haste, I take responsibility for it, I handed it in by accident before I got an answer.
No problem.
I'll find out first thing in the morning.
All right.
I'll call Sandy of Patriots. I agree, that should be a warranty thing. Whether the Ubolts were loose and caused it to break, or it broke and you, I don't know, but I'll find out.
Speaking of Patriots, we've given, we've been talking to them some about this year's truck, they've actually given us a proposal on a truck, and we need to first, I think I may have mentioned in the past, I want to see if it's something that someone else has bid on, so it's a good price, so I want to come back to the board with something in the next, at the next meeting. We do need to pull the trigger on that vehicle, and, you know, and borrow some money this year, just to keep in line with our borrowing schedule.
Okay. Motion to, any more questions on the bills and warrants?
Motion approved.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business, Doreen?
I just have a question about the property on Halfgood Place. You know, I walk my dog Center Avenue B and Front Street, and you can look down, and that tarp is all ripped, and the roof is wide open.
Yeah, it's wide open. Has been for quite a while, well over a year.
That was last in bankruptcy, too, if we recall correctly.
That's, that's my understanding, there's still, I believe it still is, I haven't seen, noticed that it has not grown, but it's a disaster.
We can't do anything, is that right? It just is what it is?
I can check and see if it's still in bankruptcy, you can't do anything toward the previous owner while it's in that status, but if it's lifted, we can, you know, do health orders, or we can find out.
If I remember, that was declared an unsafe building.
Yeah, at one time, I believe so.
Which then would fall on the village to handle.
I think it is, if I remember.
They got the unsafe building ordinance.
Yeah, I don't recall if we had it or not.
I think Bill Weston shut it down.
I believe that may have occurred, yes, out of recollection.
And it was boarded up?
Yeah.
People were in it, officer got hurt going inside after the people. Talk about that building for-
Peter?
We're making progress, though, little by little, on these-
Uh-huh, we're gaining. Yeah, just as a note, I did download the light ordinances from Rutland and Springfield. Kind of interesting when you read them. The Rutland one is more comprehensive than Springfield, which I'm surprised, seeing as Cuda wrote that one, but-
I think Springfield said that they're revisiting it.
They're expanding it, they're going to try and catch up to where Rutland did. Because Rutland specifically states a product of a building that looks, it's blight on, create blight on the neighborhood, and causes, you know, a reflection on property values in that neighborhood, then they can, they can consider that as that, and it's, I just got a question as to how they handle the bankruptcy issues, like we're doing now with ours, you know, do they sit there and wait, or, and I think in Rutland, they moved on a couple of them that were-
Yeah, I mean, a municipality can exercise its police powers under, even under bankruptcy, so, you could do that.
Stephen, I think? Gaetano?
Just looking at this maintenance plan we just approved, that we're going to hope to possibly get the timing like the rest of the Westminster Street, possibly-
Yeah, the items that are-
Same company.
Yeah, the items that are close to, you know, with close proximity, we're going to, we're going to see about working with that vendor.
We kind of added from church to all the way to the dome now.
Yeah, we'll have to have a discussion with them. But other ones, Saxon's Reverend, all that, we would, we would need to go out to bid, depends on-
And then-
But we'll, we'll examine that, we were going to sit down with Everett also, and have him help us out a little bit on this.
Because some of those, like infringe this timeline where we don't want to be doing stuff. All long days.